Call to order, the Tuesday, June 16th, 2020, meeting of the Iredal County Board of Commissioners for our seven o'clock regular meeting. At this time, I'd ask everyone to bow our heads in prayer silently and to consider praying earnestly for the health of our country as we deal with the COVID-19 pandemic and also for spiritual healing for our nation as we address the sad events surrounding George Floyd's and other people of colors' deaths recently that have highlighted so many of the issues that need to be addressed. So if you'll please join us in prayer. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Jones, could you please review any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir. We do have one addition, which is under new business, and it will be modifying our meeting schedule.
Thank you. Any further adjustments by any commissioners? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Howe. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we have some special presentations of some recognitions of two very special individuals. First, we have a presentation of a plaque and a proclamation relating to the retirement of Iredal Statesville Schools Superintendent Brady Johnson. So I would first off like to read the body of the proclamation, and then we will officially adopt that, and then I'll ask Mr. Johnson to please come up, and we can present him the proclamation and the plaque, and also give him the floor. The proposed proclamation honoring Superintendent Brady Johnson on the occasion of his retirement. Whereas on June 30th, 2020, Brady Johnson Superintendent will retire after serving Iredal Statesville Schools since September 1978. And whereas upon graduating from South Iredal High School, Mr. Johnson received an associate's degree from Mitchell Community College, Bachelor of Science in Social Studies from Appalachian State University, and a Master of Arts in Education Leadership from Garner Webb University. Whereas Mr. Johnson began his career with the Iredal Statesville Schools in 1978, first as a teacher, then assistant principal, and principal, before being named deputy superintendent in 2006, and in 2009, he was appointed superintendent. And whereas Mr. Johnson's great success as chief administrator earned him the title of A. Craig Philip North Carolina Superintendent of the Year in 2014, and in 2015, served as the superintendent advisor to the North Carolina State Board of Education. And whereas, thanks to Mr. Johnson's leadership, the district has embraced computer-enhanced learning, as well as the school choice movement, which in addition to traditional schooling, offers parental choice options, including Spanish dual immersion, international baccalaureate, early college, STEM-themed schools, and an A-plus arts integrated magnet school, as well as numerous other options for students in the area of career and technical education, and has also championed effective character-building programs. And whereas, in addition to his professional career, Mr. Johnson has served on many community-based agencies and been named Statesville Citizen of the Year in 2016, and the 2018 Outstanding Citizen of the Year by the Gemstone District of the Piedmont Council of the Boy Scouts, and in 2020, was recognized with North Carolina's highest honor as an inductee in the Order of the Longleaf Pine. Is there a motion to adopt this proclamation?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to proudly make the motion to approve this proclamation as presented, honoring Superintendent Brady Johnson on the occasion of his retirement.
Motion to adopt this proclamation. Any further discussion?
Can I make a few comments?
Please.
If would. Mr. Johnson, I'll make it to you for the benefit of everyone else if I could. And these proclamations are real good with the whereas's and all that kind of stuff. I'm going to give it to you just as plain and from a personal perspective, if I could. As Superintendent of the Iredal Statesville School System, part of your job by design was to ask almost literally everybody in this community to do a little bit more. Okay? I mean, from the first day I ever met you, for the most part, our two school systems needed more space because they had more students, which means they needed more buildings, more classrooms. It put us in a position where we had to figure out a way to do more. At the same time, you were having to go to your teachers, and as the cultural changes that have occurred since you've been in leadership positions, not just as superintendent, but as a principal and such, you've had to ask the teachers to adjust and to fill those gaps to meet the needs. I heard you ask your staff to try to do more, to stretch those resources, to make them go further, to make better use of money, to fix things, repair things. And I remember when he came and they wanted us to do more, to help and to get computers for all the kids. And I remember all the people who thought, "That was crazy. I didn't have computers when I went to school. Those kids, they don't need computers. What a big waste of time and money." Holy cow. COVID-19. What would our options had been if our children weren't able to work remotely? We owe you a lot of thanks because you took a lot of beatings, and you took it gracefully. You took beatings from people you shouldn't have. He did ask the citizens, a lot of this stuff costs a little bit more money, and he was never ugly about it. He was always respectful, and that is, our staff is having to do more. You know, citizens have to do more. I understand it. He asked his -- so yes, he asked the citizens to do more, but he asked his staff to do more, and I'm going to tell you, I've heard him also say that the parents needed to do more. Parents needed to spend time reading with their children, teaching them those basics. And he never did this in a way that was condescending, or rude, or ugly, or offensive. It's, "We can all do a little bit better," and we should. And I'm going to tell you, what a great approach. When you look at all that has been done, and I would say the fact that we got a high school funded, on your way out the door, it's kind of like the team makes some of the best plays at the end of the game. You know, he went out strong and on a high note, looking after not -- looking at the students that will benefit from that high school might not even know your name. But it was on your watch that a lot of that heavy lifting got done. So I'd just like to recognize not just what you did, but kind of the way you did it. Personally, I'm a little bit mouthier. I understand that. And you always had a much more subtle approach, but you know what? It worked. It worked. And I've got a tremendous amount of respect for you, not just because of what you did, but the way you did it, and you certainly always inspired me to, you know, to make sure that I shouldered my share of the burden and that I could do better. And I think our community is better off because of it. So anyway, I'll quit rambling, but thank you very much. Okay?
I would just like to say I serve on the Education Task Force with Chairman Mallory and before that Commissioner Norman, and I want to say we got to work directly with Mr. Johnson and the manager probably more than anybody. But I just want to reflect and say we appreciate your impacts, as the proclamation says, and I want to reflect, if I may, I want to embarrass Brady a minute, not in a bad way, but reflecting on his career and in my experiences in this county, some of the things that he was proud of in the system, as you know, he increased minority leadership in central office for the first time in history. His minority leadership through the system, females, males, people of color, he was very proud of that because these people were qualified in all aspects, and he wanted to reflect in the school system what the children looked like throughout our county as well. And he worked hard for that, and I think I can say on people's part that I know from the community, they recognize that he listened and heard people, and in some cases, you know, Brady tried to fix every problem and didn't have all the answers and the solutions, but he tried. He integrated faith-based programs in our schools to try to help in the communities and fix aspects that were not being handled at home. There's a lot of kids that got fed and clothes washed over the years through the system, and Superintendent, he supported his staff, doing a lot of these things that the community or parents were not able to do. But I remember one story with tears in his eyes about one thing he did personally as superintendent when he was unable to keep all the employees and staff. He took that, he made that news or delivered that news himself because he didn't want to put that burden on his -- he could have delegated that down staff so he didn't have to face the employees, but he did that personally because he looked at these people as professionals and part of our community, and that was one aspect of his character that I think we have as our manager too, is they take everything personal, and their goal is to be perfect and make the system better throughout the county, the school system, and I want to say I appreciate that. But on behalf of the commissioners, we'll miss you. Many, many nights that I ride by, live close by the central office, and the lights on late at night, weekends, Mr. Johnson's at community events throughout the county on a regular basis, and you'll be missed. So I want to congratulate you, may God bless you and your family. Thank your family for sharing you with us in this county, and the impacts you'll leave will be hard to feel, but we're going to all do our best to fill those shoes and make the same positive impacts, and I hope that we can leave a legacy one day of, in some cases, people say you were too nice, but I hope if we all could have that legacy one day of being cooperative and too nice and caring about every person, and I don't think you ever saw race, sex, or color in any decision you made. And congratulations and wish you well.
We have a motion. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners of Iredal County, we take great pleasure in recognizing Mr. Johnson for his invaluable contributions to Iredal Statesville Schools and generations of Iredal County citizens, adopted this 16th day of June 2020. Mr. Johnson? First off, we'll keep our social distance here. Give you a hug later.
All right. Or what? Kisses.
But this is a proclamation from the heart to a big man, but a man with a bigger heart than anybody that I know in terms of his passion and commitment to the people of Iredal County. We'll hold it on the separate edge.
All right.
And to adorn your "I love me" wall, that I know your wife will be happy to see all the accolades that you have stored, you know, displayed in your office migrate to your home, that I'm sure you have some very special place in the garage picked out. This is a plaque that is on behalf of our county board of commissioners, presented to Brady Johnson, in grateful appreciation of your leadership and dedication to Iredal Statesville Schools, September 1978, June 2020, Iredal County Board of Commissioners, June 16, 2020. Thank you, sir. Floor is yours, sir.
All right. Thank you. You know, all school superintendents have a little bit of Baptist preacher in them. And so if there's an audience generally of six or more people, we have a little sermon. So I will be very brief in my comments, but I do want to sincerely say, Chairman Mallory and board members, Mrs. Jones and staff, thank you for this great honor tonight. It means a lot to me personally, but anytime I've been recognized, I think a lot of that recognition goes to my staff because they're out there on that front line doing the work every day. So on behalf of the 2,700 full-time and 300 part-time employees that make up the Iredal Statesville Schools, I want you to receive thanks tonight on their behalf for this recognition and the kind words that you had for me and the school system. I always preface my comments by simply saying that Iredal Statesville Schools is not a perfect school system. If you're looking for perfection, we're not the organization to model that. However, we are a school system that does try to model continuous self-improvement, and we take that very, very serious. And over the years, I think it's helped us become a better organization that has better served our students and the community. As a school superintendent, there's just a couple priorities that really I consider to be the big rocks that I focus on each and every day. First of all, is the safety, security, and well-being of our students. We always said that at the end of the day, our parents expect us to send those children back to them safe and sound and in better condition than they came that morning. Secondly, we are a learning organization, and at the end of the day, we are committed to helping each child achieve their full potential. I think that's something that we've done a fairly good job with. I do know that our school system is nationally recognized for the efforts we've made in student achievement. I had the great privilege and honor of being on a Zoom call, one of seven school systems in the nation last week, with Secretary of Education DeVos, and we were asked to participate in that, to talk about our response to COVID and how we had handled distance learning. And what a great honor that was to be representing Iredal County and our schools here on a national stage. The other area that I think a good superintendent should always focus on is accountability. And one of the areas that I think is extremely important is we are indebted to our federal, our state, and our local taxpayers, and we really operate in a position of trust with these hard-working people who get up every day, go to work, and they pay their taxes and do the right thing, and they entrust us to spend that money wisely. And I am extremely proud that in our school system, over many, many years, both internally and externally, all of our auditors have been able to say that there were zero audit findings. That's really important. Also, over the last many years, we've had 27 major construction projects that you have funded, and we are very, very grateful for that. And I've always been proud to go back to the community and simply say to them that every one of those projects was completed on time and either on budget or under budget. And that's the type of accountability that we have to give the public when we expect them to continue to fund public education. The work of the school system could not have taken place without a lot of great partners, and many of those partners are folks like our chambers of commerce, our faith-based community, people like the NAACP, many, many nonprofits in the community, and we do enjoy a wide range of support. Among our chief supporters is our legislative delegation, and I really tip my hat to Senator Sawyer, Representative Fraley, and Representative McNeely. They are all products of public education, and they certainly understand the value of public education, and they have, at their own political peril, defended public education on many occasions for us, and we are very, very grateful for that. My final comments are directed to you, the county commissioners, Aunt Ms. Jones, and the staff. School systems and county government enjoy a unique relationship. You are only required to have one duty as it relates to public education, and that is your charge with building buildings for the children. But your role far, far exceeds that. You folks have done an absolutely wonderful job over the years of supporting public schools throughout this community. You have written, passed, and sent to Raleigh many resolutions on our behalf, when we've asked you to. Things like the grading system, school calendar flexibility, funding for teacher pay, and a champion of unfunded mandates from Raleigh. So we thank you for that. You have also done an excellent job of funding the school systems. We are funded above the state average locally, and you guys are being commended for that. And the one area that I'm extremely proud of is the recent funding formula that you put in place at our request, which is a godsend to the Iredal Statesville Schools. That is going to positively impact this school system for decades to come. It was unique. It was out of the box. You took a risk to do that, and I commend you for doing that. You have always been supportive of the bond referendums, and again, to your own political peril. You've gave fiery speeches on our behalf that stirred and motivated the community. You've worked tirelessly out in the community promoting those bonds, and I will commend you for that. I think it's unfortunate that a lot of the folks in our community do not know the level of facilities that we do have. Our facilities are clean, they're modern, it helps our teachers engage our kids. You really do not appreciate that until you travel out of Iredal County and see some of the buildings that the children in North Carolina go into every single day. But you guys have done a remarkable job of doing your one constitutionally required duty, and that is providing those buildings. You have also done an exemplary job of bridging a gap, and this gap has to do with economic development and the correlation between strong public schools and workforce development. Gosh, I'll tell you, that is probably the one area that I have been proudest of you in. You guys even funded the Edge Factor, which is a powerful tool to help parents understand the value of career and technical education and the great careers that are available right here in our community with limited education beyond high school. Finally, I really commend you for the formation of your task force model. I do work closely with the Education Task Force, along with Commissioner Howe and Chairman Mallory and Ms. Jones and the staff, and I'll tell you something, meeting with the school crowd on a regular basis is not a pleasant thing to do. It can be an exercise in futility and frustration, but they come back time and time again. So thank you for meeting with us like that and getting down into the nitty-gritty of our budget and our operations and what it takes to run an effective and efficient school system. I hope that that task force will continue for many more years to come because it has improved communication and our understanding and our working relationships, so I applaud you for that. In closing, let me just simply say this. Public education is every child's chance and every community's future. Thank you.
Thank you, Brady, and here goes a great public servant of the people. As I said, his heart is as big as he is, and that's an example of someone who was born and raised in Iredal County and has stayed here for his entire career, dedicated to, you know, improving the lives of all of the young people of Iredal County, many of us who are now old. But he will be greatly missed. We now have another farewell. Dr. Brian Beaver, who is our medical director, is moving on back to his home state of Kansas along with his family this coming Thursday. And as the medical director, he works directly with our emergency medical service. And as the medical director, he works directly with our emergency medical service, providing guidance as far as appropriate methods to deliver medical care in emergency situations. And also beyond our emergency medical service, which he works to ensure that there is appropriate training, he also works with all of the other volunteer and professional agencies that provide ancillary support to medical services, which would be your rescue squads, your volunteer fire departments, your full-time fire departments, and working with our emergency communications system to ensure that dispatches are made appropriately under multiple codes. I had no idea how complex the coding system was for dispatches for medical calls and who's supposed to respond. And he, in addition to performing these duties, he's a full-time physician, works in emergency department, heads up the Iredell Memorial Hospital Emergency Department through the Wake Forest. And so he's really twice the citizen. He's doing a double duty, many long hours have taken him away from his beautiful family. We thank you for the investment that you've made in Iredell County so that it enabled Dr. Beaver to make his investment. To give you a little bit of idea of some of his accomplishments, he's only been the medical director here since December of 2017, but the, the impact he's had in this some two and a half years has been lasting and deep. He was instrumental in supporting our EMS and its growth with his approval and guidance. They've been able to participate in trials over the last few years that will improve patient care across the state and potentially the nation. Implementing best practices is what it's about, and, you know, you don't want to have to reinvent the wheel. And what our EMS service has been able to do under its leadership of Blair Ritchie, who's here tonight, has been able to step out and take on programs that are a test to see what we can't do to more efficiently and effectively deliver emergency care to people, to our citizens. And so sometimes those involve stepping outside of the box, asking for a little more money, which after being thoroughly wire brushed in the process, have been able to get some additional funds, and we've been able to see a tremendous amount of return on that investment, particularly our proactive community services for people that have chronic conditions. And we're frequently calling EMS to be able to be transported or helped at home. And so this proactive, preventive-type medicine has been able to cut down on those calls, which are by their very nature expensive to conduct, and emergency room visits, which are by their very nature are expensive. So it's been that leadership and a great team effort with our EMS leadership and staff and all of our other provider agencies that, as they look to Dr. Beaver for that technical guidance and medical expertise, he's been able to train and ensure that they are equipped, ensure that they are dispatched and appropriately missioned. And we have seen the results speak for themselves in terms of quantitative data that measure different aspects of medical services. For instance, in the 2019 CARES report on out-of-hospital cardiac arrest, there's an overall survival rate in Iredell County of 15.6%. That's higher than the North Carolina average of 12.6%. Now, 3%, you know, that doesn't sound like a lot, but if, if you're one of the three, that's 100% to you. So that's, that's a, you know, every life is a victory, and that's what it's about. The national average, by the way, is 10.5%. Additionally, they were second out of 14 North Carolina agencies of similar size. Their bystander CPR rate is 55.3%. That means people that are responding, that have been trained and are aware of the appropriate methods, that's higher than the average for, for North Carolina of 36.9%. That's, that's almost 20% higher. And for calls, ECOM provides CPR instructions, they receive compliance from the caller from those instructions 64.2% of the time, and the North Carolina average is 51%. So this is, these are the demonstrable, objective criteria that can give you a sense that the medical care of the professionals that we have, both full-time and volunteer, is really second to none. You know, eking out just a percentage here or there is difficult, and you can see that our Iredell County responders provide care well above the average. And that starts really with our paramedics on, on the, on the ground at the tip of the spear, but they are resourced and they are trained and they're missioned by the folks that are charged with those duties. And Dr. Beaver and Richie, you know, we appreciate you and your staffs and your entire complement of staff that make this happen. So what I'd like to do is we do have a plaque that we would like to present to Dr. Beaver, who is moving on back to Kansas to be near family, and as I said, taking his beautiful family with him. Our loss is certainly Kansas' gain, but we hope that you will come back and be a frequent flyer visitor. So if these come up and, and if the family can come up after.
One season in tornado alley, you'll be.
And Blair, I'd like you to come up. This is a EMS plaque, it's got the logo here, it's presented to Brian Beaver, M.D., in sincere gratitude for the compassion, guidance, and outstanding leadership provided to Iredell County EMS Medical Director, 2016-2020. So if you'll put that in front of you, and then we'll all be able to be flanking you And the family, if you'll could come up. These are the essential enablers for any doctor's career.
Where's Toto?
Yeah. He's at home. Come on up. Now, y'all can get together, y'all are a family here. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you all very much.
We now move on to item six, appointment before the board. We have an update by our health director, Jane Henson, on the COVID-19, and, and also emergency management director, Kent Green, on the status of Iredell County's response and what we're looking at down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really, the COVID-19 response in Iredell County is a public health response. Emergency management's function has been to support them, support the first responder agencies, the hospitals, the clinics, doctors' offices, and other providers of critical services. Even the testing the health departments provided, emergency management has supported those with resources such as our, our shelter, our signboard, people to the testing sites, cones, trailers, other materials as they requested. As of today, since the coronavirus began, we have received 165 individual resource requests, we've made 123 deliveries or deployments. Those include 30 gallons of disinfectant, over 100 bottles of hand sanitizer, over 800 masks and Tyvek suits for first responders, over 700 face shields for healthcare providers, 1,200 isolation gowns, about 3,100 N95 respirators for our first responder agencies, 7,200 surgical masks for non-healthcare providers, and as of today, 57,000 gloves to all kinds of agencies from nursing homes, long-term care facilities, doctors' offices, clinics, first responder agencies as well. It has definitely been a team effort. We have about six to eight conference calls a week with local providers, the municipalities, checking on their resource need, state agencies with regional providers, as well as the state EOC. And Ms. Henson and her staff provide us updates every day that we pass along to the state. And I can't say enough about her staff, especially from the testing component, the number of staff that they have been able to get through these testing sites, as well as her cooperation with the health director in Mecklenburg County, who has been gracious enough to allow us to house two COVID-positive homeless persons in their facility, preventing us from having to have that expense for Iredell County, at least thus far. It was very difficult for us to get leverage or some traction with local hotels to do something similar for us without it costing about a half a million dollars. So we're grateful to Mecklenburg County and both Ms. Jones' contact with the Mecklenburg County manager and Ms. Henson's contact with the health director of Mecklenburg County. Be glad to ask, answer any questions in an emergency management perspective.
Any questions from?
Appreciate the work.
You've had an ongoing EOC being operated.
That's correct. The EOC has been active for 75 days, which I believe is the longest in Iredell County history. It's also the first time that all 100 counties in North Carolina have been under a state of emergency. So it's, it's definitely new territory for all of us, and it's, it's been a learning experience, one we hope we don't have to repeat. However, I do believe that Iredell County is one of the counties that is uniquely positioned because of our other cooperations and, and relationships with other counties, with our municipal leaders, with other health departments, our practice with McGuire, just recently practiced the medical countermeasures distribution, just as we got rolling into COVID-19, which could become a reality should a vaccine become available. So I think we're, we're very well-prepared, we're very well-resourced, in a good position moving forward.
Do you feel like if there is a significant increase, second wave, as it's called, or, isolated hotspots, do you believe that our responding agencies have sufficient PPE to be able to handle those new demands?
I believe so. Our biggest concern has been gowns. Face shields have been relatively easy to source because they're easy to make and they're inexpensive. The state, in a request to send 50 boxes of gloves, sent us 50 cases, so we have a surplus of those. We've been told to hold on to those and don't request anymore until we begin to deplete those. So I think we're in a good position as far as PPE is concerned. One concern that we do have is if our first responder agencies become impacted and individuals on engine companies or even with EMS or law enforcement become impacted and personnel are lost to isolation and quarantine. How do we backfill those, those resources? We're seeing some of that in nursing facilities at this point, not locally, but in our region, and we're addressing that on the state level.
Have we gotten to the point now yet where we are able to test, test our staff to determine how much maybe immunity we've got built up with our first responders?
I'll defer that to Ms. Henson.
As far as staff right now, if they, if there's been an exposure, absolutely we can test, but there's not been any recommendations from DHHS or the CDC to just randomly test.
With the asymptomatic exposure, and I know, and I know that the immunity question hasn't been fully answered, and there's some theories, but when we came out of lockdown, we always knew that the, that the number of occurrences of COVID-19 would go up, okay? And the whole purpose of doing the lockdown was so that, so that we would not exceed the capability of our medical resources and stuff like that. So we, we had a chance to figure out our 50 boxes or 50 cases and, and stuff like that, we understand it. But I was just wondering, like you said, if the, the bottleneck in all of this may not end up being gloves and gowns and masks, it might be our, our folks getting sick. And that's why I was curious as to if we had any, I mean, to me, that'd be real interesting to know, you know? We could have first responders that say, holy cow, I, I had it and I never knew it. That's a good thing to know if it gets bad because we know who can go, you know? We know who we can depend on. Okay, that was my question, sorry.
As a follow-up to that, Commissioner, we were asked that question by the hospitals. There had been some discussion at the state level about testing hospital staff weekly because of the shifts that they work, and if you test positive Monday, you're exposed on Tuesday, we'll catch it next Monday. That, I believe, would be cost prohibitive. It's about $100 a test, I believe. We're talking hundreds of tests every week without knowing if a positive means an infection or if it was a previous infection. We did have one individual that tested positive twice, four weeks apart. So we're not sure of, of when that positive was actually positive or if it was a lingering impact. So those are still a lot of questions to be answered in regards to the testing of staff.
Very briefly, just to give you a situation update, but before I do that, I want to say thank you to everybody that's in the audience with a mask. That is so important, and taking that personal responsibility is what's going to make a difference with our prevention efforts with COVID-19. My mask is in my bag, everyone here I'm sure has one, but we, I really want to tell you how much we appreciate that. In Iredell County today, as of this afternoon, we have 460 cases. We had seven deaths, we had another death this afternoon. This individual was in a high-risk category. And we have 12 individuals that are hospitalized, and that doubled over the weekend, going into the weekend we had six. So what we are hearing and what we're seeing is typically hospitalizations occur in the second week of infection, so individuals feel better, think they're getting better, and suddenly will take a downward turn. But our healthcare system is doing an excellent job of taking care of those individuals that are hospitalized. If you look at the map that we have on the website, in the northern part of the county, there are 115 confirmed cases, and the central part, 182. part of the county, there are 115 confirmed cases, and the central part, 182, and in the southern part, 163. So what we're seeing is that shift. Initially, we had many more cases in the southern part. A couple of things I wanted to share with you. We did have five community drive-through testing clinics. Almost every employee at the health department was involved in those clinics. There were massive operations that we planned and we manned ourself. A total of 932 individuals were tested, 40 tested positive. The percentage of positive to test that were delivered is 4.3%. But something I want to share with you is, as staff were providing this service, they told me that very few individuals that came to be tested were symptomatic or sick. So what that means to us is of those 40, a large majority of those were asymptomatic. They were concerned, maybe had a chronic condition, wanted to see had they been exposed. So that, that is something that we had learned. The CDC has seen that, but I know that we are seeing that locally. And as our county manager mentioned, we have a new relationship with a company called StarMed. They come in, you know, we, we have the relationships with the community. We establish the testing site. They do the billing, and anyone that doesn't have an, have insurance, it would cover the expense for the test. Then they recoup that money through federal dollars. So this is of no cost to us. Today was not a good day to have that first clinic with the horrible weather, but 24 individuals did come out to get tested. So that's 24 more than we had. And also at the health department, we have started in our own staff or testing contacts to individuals that have tested positive. Unless they're symptomatic, if they're asymptomatic, it's recommended you test around day six because that kind of gives you time for that incubation to see if that individual is going to be positive. Couple of things that we're most proud of, that we've worked on, is you've heard the word outbreak. You've heard the word congregate living facilities, which is our long-term care facilities, our assisted living facilities, and our jails. And if you go on the DHHS website, you'll see many counties have had horrible outbreaks where they've had hundreds of individuals, staff members, and residents affected. I was looking yesterday, and I think I saw one outbreak that had 30-some deaths. That is something that we do not want to have in Iredell County, and that's the most vulnerable populations. So an outbreak is termed as two or more cases within a 28-day period in residents or staff in one of these long-term care facilities. We have only had two. And in both of those outbreaks, it was one resident and one employee. And when all the testing was done, that was it. That is all we had. And I want to say, I'm so proud of our staff because in April, we had the foresight, this was not a recommendation, this was our EpiTeam, as we were talking through what we can do to try to prevent that from happening. We sent teams of a nurse and environmental health specialists to all 18 of our facilities in the county to look at infection control plans, to make sure they were using appropriate personal protective equipment, to make sure they were sanitizing appropriately, and the environment was cleaned appropriately. If they didn't have the PPE they needed, we helped them go through the process at DHHS to get it. And if they still couldn't get it, we contacted Kent at the EOC. So we are very proud and believe that those efforts helped because early on, we were helping them. It was, it's difficult enough with what they have to do in the facility, but on top of that, to prepare for COVID-19. So we wanted to be part of that and help them. Now you've heard the term clusters. Clusters are for any other business entity, church, outside of those that would be outbreak facilities, like congregate living facilities. So this was a new term for us. In fact, our guidance came probably less than a week, week or two ago from DHHS. So if there's five or more cases in any of those environments within a 14-day period and they're linked together, for instance, individuals work the same shift in an industry, and we ended up with five or more cases. It's difficult to know in those situations if the transmission is occurring within that organization or community transmission. What environmental health stepped up the plate, to the plate and decided to do is to establish a strike team so that if we have any of those clusters, they offer their services to help that administrator or that facility look at what types of things they need to do environmentally to clean, which most often means you shut down. If you shut down for seven days, then when you open back up, just routine cleaning. But if you shut down for 24 hours and you want to do that deep sanitizing, there's certain things that you need to do to make sure the environment's protected, to make sure your staff's protected. We did a press release on that. We sent the press release to the chambers to go out to all the organizations. When we learn about a cluster, environmental health is contacting those facilities and offering their assistance. And just recently, the Public Health Toolkit came out for schools. You've probably heard about that. It's a pretty comprehensive document. DPI worked on that with officials at DHHS. And what schools will have to do is establish three plans because we do not know, and we won't know, until July 1st, when the governor makes a decision based upon the data that they're analyzing in Raleigh, what's going to happen in the fall with our schools. So the schools have to have three plans. One would involve minimal social distancing for students. One plan would involve moderate social distancing, and one would involve remote learning, as if what they were doing before kids were sent home in March. Again, we've offered our assistance. In fact, we assisted many of the schools with their graduation plans when they call and say, can you tell me if this is okay? Is this safe? You know, what recommendations do you have? Dr. Brewer has contacted me several times, and I've looked at his plans in regards to safety and what they're trying to do. And we, so what we've seen just recently, and I really don't want Brady to retire because we so have enjoyed working with him, and I told him, leaving right now with COVID-19. So we'll establish a relationship with the new superintendent. But we've offered our assistance to help if they would like us to, whether it's attend meetings, to look at all the guidance that we have, give suggestions, or, or even just review the plans when we have them, when they have them. Because that's an awful lot of work for them to do, not knowing what's going to happen. Some of the challenges that we have, honestly, is infrastructure. On June the 5th, we had 37 positives. We have 12 nurses. We have other responsibilities. We have other communicable diseases. So we have, now we're in the mode of all hands on deck. What that means is we're pulling staff. We have bilingual staff that are in WIC, that are in administration, that are in health promotion, and we're using those staff. We've trained other staff to do contact tracing because right now, this is our absolute priority. Exciting news is, we just found out last week that we're going to be getting an additional $420,000. We're going to use every bit of that to hire temp staff, bilingual staff, most likely. I'll be bringing that before you as soon as we get our agreement addenda from the state because we want to be able to respond. One of the deliverables is within 24 hours to make sure we can do that initial contact. And one of the concerns most recently that we've seen is, in our Hispanic population, about 33% of those that are tested positive are in that population. So we need the bilingual staff. And right now, we're developing a plan, education plan, so that we will, we can provide preventive education in the grocery stores, any churches, restaurants. You know, we'll be going door-to-door basically with our Spanish materials, making sure that everything is there because we want to do everything we can to prevent the spread of this virus. We know, I know that we've already seen a cluster, you read about in the paper, recently in a school. So when students do come back, if they come back, you know, that's going to be difficult to manage. We want the students to learn. We want them to learn safely. So, you know, we are already preparing for what could happen when we start putting a large number of individuals in, in a room. The three Ws are still the most important thing, which is wear cloth face covering when you are in the community. I've been out three times in four months, and all three times, two were in my drugstore, one was in a grocery store. I cringed because so few people in Statesville wore cloth face covering. I saw them touch vegetables. I saw them not practice social distancing. And unless that changes, we're going to continue to see cases. And we're going to continue to see individuals that are very sick. So I truly applaud people that take that personal responsibility. Social distancing, six feet apart, is so important. And washing your hands for 20 seconds with soap and water, or using hand sanitizer, there's a minimum of 60% alcohol. Those are the basic messages. That is all we have right now, and that's why that is so important. So I'll be glad to answer any questions. And we appreciate the teamwork from law enforcement, from EMS, from emergency management. We are all working on this. We are all one team, and they're available when we need them. And if they have questions, you know, we're available to answer that. And I appreciate the partnership, and most importantly, the phenomenal staff that work at the health department, that this has turned our world absolutely upside down. And no one has complained. This is our job. This is what we do. And this is, we want to do the best that we can.
Just want to say, I'm aware of the extremely long hours for a protracted period of time that, that you spent working on this, Ms. Henson. I'm just glad she didn't show up with HR and complain that she's only making $3 an hour. But, you know, for, for folks who have this stereotype in their mind of what a government employee does, if you look, how many, 75 days of EOC being open? And, and you were involved with this long before the, the state of emergency was declared, and the staffs that both of you represent. County government is a service organization. We don't manufacture widgets. We provide services to people, and it takes folks to do that that have a bit of a servant's heart. And, and y'all are both great examples of that. So thank you very much for the work that you-
Thank you to our county leaders too, because I know from Ms. Jones to Ms. Robertson, to our county attorney, there's a lot of legal issues that you might not even consider with COVID-19. So they're on my speed dial, and I know that their support is there. I know that your support is there in the Board of Health, and we really do appreciate that.
I just want to echo that, the, you know, the citizens that I talked to and the staff and people that, you know, the dedication. And I want, again, as I have been doing, is thank the citizens for their cooperation and understanding and grace during these times because we have unintentionally negatively impacted them with procedure changes. Our changes and our staffs have refocused, the manager refocused departments where needed. And I know some of you, particularly you, Jane, have worked through family deaths and situations and stayed focused, and you're, and, and we appreciate your dedication. And a lot of people don't see and know those things, but all of our staff were proud of them. Lot of hard work, and we strive to give the citizens the services that they expect in return for their tax dollars. And so we're doing the best we can, and, and we want to thank them for their grace and understanding during these times.
I'll just say, you know, for our staff, this county's not shut down. There are a lot of governments that have gone on virtually life support. Our county staff has provided the full range of services that people expect and need. And some departments have been on overdrive. Our public health is one, and Department of Social Services having to process additional Medicaid applications and having, you know, to still get out and, you know, provide services to, to protect children and adults that are in abusive situations. It's, it's very heartening to see that level of dedication, not just to their jobs, but to their fellow citizens. That's what it's about. What our fellow citizens can do is to exercise our freedom of choice in a responsible way. We have to reopen our economy. You know, there's this, if you don't reopen the economy, eventually you start having negative impacts on other healthcare issues, you know. And people, whether it's mental health issues or things that we've seen, for instance, visits to the emergency room down by more than 50%. We've seen calls to EMS significantly down, you know, 50%. People are still having heart attacks. People are still having strokes. But if they're not, you know, calling 911 to get service quickly, then it's not going to be a good result. And so people need to understand that our first-line responders, our healthcare organizations are all set up. You know, if you go to the hospital, you're not more likely to come out with COVID-19. You're a lot more likely in the grocery store or in any other store. So wearing a mask is absolutely, you know, imperative, in my view, if you're going into a retail establishment because you're protecting those other people. And their staff ought to be wearing masks to protect you. And, and if you're in establishments where people generally don't have any kind of masks on, then you just have to exercise that personal choice about whether you really want to be in that particular establishment. I will commend everybody. You know, Iredell County has a lower rate of infection for our most vulnerable population of folks over 65, generally around 12% to 13%. And the state average is more closer to 20. So people, I think, that are living in multi-generational households are taking it seriously from the, from the objective data because fewer of those vulnerable folks are becoming infected. But as has been said, this is, this is showing up in a large number of folks that's, that are completely asymptomatic. You know, they don't know they have it. They've not had any symptoms. So we all have to assume that we have it, and we have to assume that other folks that we deal with have it, and exercise our caution accordingly. You know, the whole point of this has been to lower the curve, is to not overwhelm our hospitals and the stocks of PPE that our first responders and healthcare providers need. And we've been able to do that in Iredell County. But have you, as you've heard, just in the last week, we've had a doubling of hospitalizations. We've had a significant increase in number of positive cases. Part of that is clearly due to more testing. If you're, before, people weren't getting tested unless they were seriously ill and were going to need to go to the hospital. Otherwise, they were sent home and said, you know, isolate for 14 days. Well, now anyone can get a test. You don't have to be showing any symptoms. Get a test. We have, you know, these mass testing exercises that are done by a contract aid agency now, which frees up our staff to be able to do the hard work of contact tracing and making sure that you can isolate folks that have been infected. So if you have any concerns, by all means, get a test. You can go to certain drugstores and get a test. You can go to your physician, get a test. We need to encourage folks to do that. But people need to balance out their personal choice to be able to move about as we open our economy with our personal responsibility to each other, and to be thoughtful about that. You know, wearing a mask is, you know, we live in a year where we're going to have a highly politicized presidential campaign that will drive people just naturally into their corners. But wearing a mask is not a political statement. You know, this disease, this virus is not political. It can affect you if you go into a nightclub or if you're going to a church. I mean, there's no difference to this virus. This virus isn't political, it's mathematical. Okay? Okay? So we need to be very cognizant of that and recognize that if people are wearing masks, you know, they're just being, they're looking out for their fellow man. And we need to have an element of grace and humility when we interact with each other. Some folks feel, don't feel like they need to wear one in those circumstances. Or some, you know, we're not wearing one right here. But we're more than six feet apart. We try to observe that social distancing rule. So anyway, more to come. You know, this bump in numbers comes about two weeks after we started opening up the economy on Memorial Day. So there seems to be, you know, there could be some connection. It's not just the fact that we're having more testing done. I think there's more transmission possible. So we just need to double down. Be particularly careful about your vulnerable folks in your homes. And do want to give a shout out to our nursing homes and our congregant care facilities for the careful work that they've done to protect their patients. And to our Iredell County Sheriff's Department for the work that it's done to protect, you know, inmates. Where, these are other facilities where there's been tremendous amounts of transmission. So thank you, Jane, and Kent. And thank your staff for us, for all the great work that they did. At this time, our county manager, Beth Jones, will review the administrative matters that are technically typically technically oriented issues that we hear from staff at the 5 o'clock pre-agenda meeting. That pre-agenda meeting is open to the public. We encourage people to come. But when we review those, we then have a consent to those items. And it's put on the consent agenda to save time at the 7 o'clock hour. So, Ms. Jones, if you'll please review, tee those up, and we will entertain a motion for consent agenda adoption.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chairman Mallory. The first item is a request from the Register of Deeds for approval of a contract renewal with COT Systems to provide records management. There is a request from Iredell Rescue for approval to withdraw funds from the Rescue Reserve account in the amount of $32,214 to purchase battery-operated rescue tools and associated equipment. A request from the library for approval to apply for a State Library of North Carolina CARES EZ Grant to assist with bridging the digital divide. A request from Tax Administration for approval of May refunds and releases in consideration by the Board of Commissioners for the adoption of a resolution regarding the 2020 business personal property late listing penalty. And again, this just waives the penalty, and it does not extend the deadline.
Okay, any further questions or comments regarding our consent agenda items? Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda? Motion by Commissioner Hough. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. By the way, I don't think I announced at the beginning of this meeting, I did at the pre-agenda. Commissioner Norman and Vice Chairman Bowles are participating via telephone. We earlier in the year adopted a change to our business practices to allow for no more than two meetings to be able, for a commissioner that was on vacation or on a business trip, to be able to call in to participate. When the state of emergency relative to COVID-19 was adopted and issued, we suspended our rules to allow for the duration of the COVID-19 emergency for us to be able to have an unlimited amount of remote participation so that we could maintain appropriate social distancing. And also, at the time when we couldn't have more than 10 people in a room. So. The next item we have is item 8.6, which is a request from administration for consideration and adoption of the FY 2021 budget ordinance. The whole budget process has been a work in progress, kind of building an airplane in flight. Normally do this in the February timeframe. A lot of input coming in from departments. Our county finance staff and leadership and Beth all sit down and go through with a fine-tooth comb all the budget requests. They'd already done that. And COVID emergency hit. And as a result of shutting down the economy, basically, it's projected that we will, probably worst case, lose about $9 million worth of revenues. Those revenue losses are from our sales taxes. They won't present themselves until three months after the month in which the sales were made. So we haven't had the effect yet, but we know it's on the way. And so they had to go back and redo the budget and figure out how to close that $9 million gap. And one of the things we did ask, and I want to thank our county staff, was to forego any raises that we normally would program in. So that, together with lapsed salaries and not filling positions and not expending certain project funds, you know, we've been able to close that gap. But it's been a painful exercise. We hope that in January, that we'll be able to revisit. And if the sales taxes have been able to recover, that we'll be able to restore some of these cuts. And our first priority would be to restore the raises that our very dedicated staff, as you've heard from the discussion before, have earned.
We got some good economic news today. Sales, retail sales were up 18% in the month of May. And we really didn't open up until the last two weeks in the month of May. So, you know, it's still early, it's still early. But that was, if you're looking for rays of sunshine and blade, you know, shoots of grass to steal a previous term, that definitely looks good. It definitely looks good.
We do want to encourage people, as our economy opens up, for them to shop locally, if ever possible, as that comes back to support the citizens of Iredell County. We had our original budget. We deferred by about a month our budget hearings and presentations. We have been through the presentation of the budget some four weeks ago. We had a public hearing that was scheduled and held two weeks ago. And normally, after that public hearing, we would have adopted the budget. But this year, the state has mandated that, rather than because of COVID-19 and the potential inability of people to engage and have their voices heard or questions answered, that an additional two weeks was tacked on to allow any kind of emails or phone calls to come in and be able to answer people's questions prior to our adoption of the budget. So we are here tonight to consider adoption of the actual budget ordinance. So, Beth?
I did give a presentation earlier at our 5 o'clock. I don't know if the board would like for me to go through that again regarding the education funding formula. If you would like for me to do that, I certainly can. Or I'll hand it over to Ms. Cheek to walk you through the ordinance.
I think we have it on record as far as the formula that we've adopted, which is essentially to be able to fully fund the operational requests of Iredell State'sville Schools and Mooresville Graded Schools to adopt a formula that meets their operational needs, which has been the biggest problem in the last, you know, as long as I've been on the board, six years. And it accomplishes that in, to some degree, by shifting dollars from capital. If money's in a capital account, you can't use it for operations. On the other hand, if you have money in operations, you can port that over to capital. So we've looked at funding formulas, and we've basically said, you know, capital expenditures is a county responsibility. Capital R Us, we build buildings for the schools. That's why we asked for the general obligation bond to be passed to be able to build two schools, a middle school in Mooresville and a high school in Iredell County, which passed by about a two to one margin. And so we have been meeting those capital requirements, essentially. The capital dollars that are there in the capital counts for the schools are there primarily to focus on major maintenance and smaller projects. Other major projects are then folded into our county capital improvement program and are predicated on the 10-year plan presented by the Facilities Task Force with a facilities improvement program. And we've met all the marks to meet those requests. So our schools will have greater flexibility in terms of dealing with their budget. And they will be getting funded by ADM, that's Average Daily Membership, in their school systems at a rate that is competitive with our other counties. Before, we were not as competitive because we had more actually in the capital budget. It's not saying we're not going to do as many capital projects. It just means that we're going to do them, funding them a different way to make sure schools have all the operating funds they need. So that's just a very brief explanation. The whole presentation is in, will be in our minutes, and it's available to view on, that we had at 5 o'clock this afternoon.
It'll be on the website, yes, to view.
So in the interest of time, we'll let that stand.
Okay.
Any comments? All right.
Then I will introduce Ms. Deb Cheek, our Finance Officer, to walk you through the budget ordinance.
Thank you. I present to you tonight our fiscal year 2021 budget ordinance for the General Fund. It is proposed at $230,357,300. That is at a tax rate of 53.75% per 100 valuation, based on a valuation of $26,674,720,000 with a collection rate of 98.91%. This budget does include a new school funding formula which shifts excess funds for capital to current expense. It has an appropriation for Iredell State'sville Schools of $52,552,698, an appropriation to Mooresville Graded School District of $15,162,195, to Mitchell Community College in the amount of $5,949,278, an appropriation for school debt service of $27,025,342, for school safety and security of $1,319,199, for total appropriation of school expenditures in the amount of $102,8712. Our All County Fire Protection Service District has a proposed budget of $13,583,902. That is a tax rate of 9 cents per 100 valuation, based on a valuation of $15,302 million. And we've used the collection rate of all of our previous tax districts. Our special revenue, ICATS, our transportation system, total budget is $33,455. Our special revenue 911 fund is $715,9192. Our special revenue Juvenile Crime Prevention Council is $445,170. Our enterprise fund of solid waste is $11,024,732. That does have one fee increase of $3 for special handling that is $38 per ton. Our enterprise fund specialty services division budget is $15,558,660. Our health insurance fund has a budget of $12,633,560. Property and liability, a budget of $995,105. Our workers' compensation of $858,650. Also included in this budget ordinance is an amended capital project ordinance for our facilities improvement fund. And that is to increase that fund by $605,000, which is the appropriation of a transfer from our general fund for next year. In our jail construction project, we have an amendment of $813,296. That is to appropriate sales tax refunds and investment earnings. There's also transfers to appropriate contingency and move money that has not been spent from contingency back to the general fund next year. Our public safety complex amended ordinance appropriate sales tax refunds and investment earnings of $373,809. There's also transfers within the expense lines to transfer money back to the general fund that has been unspent from that project, which does include the contingency funds. There's also an amendment to the Jennings Park Capital Project, appropriating investment earnings and some additional sales earnings that we had on some properties that we sold in the past. And it also transfers money up to professional services to begin the design phase for Jennings Park. We also have an amended capital project ordinance for our solid waste enterprise construction. This is appropriating a small amount of sales tax refund and also transferring some money from previous sale projects into the current. We're also coming near the end of our middle school project, Third Creek and Woodland Heights. We are, I'm sorry, appropriating additional interest earnings of $372,600. And we're also transferring contingency fees to lines that the school needs to be able to finish out this project, including furniture fixtures and equipment. And we also have an amended project ordinance for North Iredell and South Iredell High Schools, appropriating some interest and some sales tax refunds and moving money, again, to furniture fixture and equipment so they can finish up this fund. And that concludes the project ordinances for the 2021 fiscal year.
Can you repeat that?
Sure.
We've been living this for two months straight, I think. And you've been at it for four. So any additional questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the adoption of the 2020/21 budget ordinance as presented and amended.
Is that the language? Motion by Commissioner Hough. Any further discussion?
Excellent job by staff. Sorry you had to do it twice.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. G. And thank you to our finance staff and all of our department directors who waded into this.
Let me just thank the board, because this was a difficult budget, but you gave us amazing guidance. And you gave us very clear guidance at our retreat when we thought things were good. And you gave us really good guidance when things turned south and COVID-19 hit. So it's with your direction that we can present a budget that is on the mark. You give really clear guidance, and that helps us do our job. Budget team, I cannot say enough appreciation for them and the department directors. They are amazing. We have a really good group of department directors. And they understood when things happened. They said, "Look, we can do without this. Cut this. I can do without this for a little bit longer." So they worked with us, and we whittled it down to find the savings that we needed to. So I cannot say thank you enough. So, and I'm thrilled to have an approved budget.
One last thing on your plate. One last thing on your plate.
Yes, I can mark that off my to-do list.
Okay. Well, we now move on to appointments to boards and commissions. We have a large batch that we do every six months, generally speaking. And so I'll ask our county manager to, I believe, in the main, we had people applying for the positions and not a surplus of people applying for positions. So if you review the nominees.
Absolutely. The first one is the Animal Services Grievance Committee. We have three appointments. D.J. Fuller and Kenneth Louderman, which is an alternate, have volunteered to serve again, and Frederica Savage has volunteered to serve for the first time. Central Indiana Workforce Development Board, we have two appointments. Mark Brady and John Chalice have volunteered to serve again. The Farmland Preservation Advisory Board, we have two appointments, and we are still trying to contact one. So I would recommend to the board that we table this one until we can make contact to see if that second individual is willing to serve again, if the board, if that's the board's pleasure. The I Care Board of Directors, we have one appointment. Carolyn Gray has volunteered to serve again. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, five appointments. Rita Gaither, Vicky Dame, Leah Byers, Nicole Cahill, and David Addison have volunteered all to serve again. Mitchell Community College Board of Trustees, one appointment. Joe Troutman has volunteered to serve again. Social Services Board, one appointment. Sandra Redman has volunteered to serve, and she has rotated off the board and then is coming back on. So she has served on this board in the past. And then Troutman Board of Adjustment, ETJ, we have one appointment. Brent Teder has volunteered to serve again. And I think it speaks volumes that we had so many that were willing to serve again.
So with the exception of the Farmland Preservation Advisory Board, is there a motion to approve the individuals to, that have volunteered to serve to the boards and the commissions that have been summarized by Ms. Jones?
I can motion to approve all, but table the Farmland Preservation Advisory Board as requested.
Motion by Commissioner Howe. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion passes unanimously. Move on to unfinished business. I don't believe we had any identified unfinished business, and I would inquire if there is any. Seeing or hearing none, we'll move on. This is a public comment period meeting, and we have signed up to be heard five individuals. And when we run through them, I'd ask that they please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. And there will be three minutes for discussion on any topic that has moved you to address us this evening. And after we went through those that have signed up, I'll inquire if there's anybody else that would like to be heard as well. So first on the list was Tanya Thomas.
I'm Harry. Thank you for having me here tonight. I had this, had read this speech at the city council meeting last night, gonna represent it for y'all tonight. I talked to just a few of the commissioners that came down. They actually saw me out on a protest. And so my speech part of that is, the George Floyd matter is a symbol of deep-rooted matters that accelerated fires that already burned deeply in our hearts, fires that could have easily been put out over time with acts of compassion, peace, unity, and love. Some of my main points are, for Mama's Love Corporation, our access to high-paying jobs here in Iredale County by means of second chance programs, the quality in our justice system, the building up of our impoverished communities by necessary funding and youth programs, which are essential. Little rhetoric and red tape have proven to be a worthy adversary when bringing about constructive change in impoverished and low-income communities. Our communities matter, but let's focus on where the fires are out of control. Where Iredale County may be doing better than local and national counterparts, according to statistical data in certain areas, who says those numbers should dictate our dedication to our communities that suffer? They suffer from murder, drugs, gangs, uninhabitable, and often unsafe housing, poverty, mental illness, lack of transportation, and services for adults and youth alike. Upscale services are often placed in nicer parts of town, and we are satisfied with pacifying our egos that we have done enough. Well, in respect to those communities, we simply have not. Pivotal things needed and requested are programs that affect and restructure our youth, as well with invested adults. Second chance programs for adults and juveniles alike. Community redevelopment and revitalization is key. And finally, adjustments to the desensitization of those entrusted to serve our communities and the justice system and totality must be addressed. I'm simply asking on behalf of Mama's Love to meet and sit with anyone dedicated to providing community liaisons or public officials committed to exploring city or county budgets and/or grants available for the achievement of the dire needs of this community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Thomas. And if I could just say for the record, your address is at 105 Brookmead Drive, Statesville. Thank you very much. Mr. Todd Scott?
My name is Todd Scott. I'm the president of Statesville NAACP. My address is 116 Natterwest Drive, Statesville, North Carolina. Tonight, I stand before you to address the Confederate statue, based right outside these front doors of this courthouse. These statues are a representation of systematic racism. Their continued presence in our public cities and buildings is highly offensive to millions of Americans, regardless of ethnicity, and serve as a painful reminder of our histories past. These statues were put up from the 1890s to the 1920s, summoned to the 40s and 50s and 60s, which matched the era of Jim Crow. They were put up as a form or reference of intimidation to remind African-Americans of inferiority and superiority. Most were put up in public, local places like courthouses. We, the Statesville Branch NAACP, want to reinforce our national NAACP initiative to force removal and relocation to a private area of any and all Confederate monuments and statues. Striking or tearing the statue down will not solve all the racial injustices that exist. But let's take the first step in our city of Statesville to address solidarity. Let's take down, remove, or relocate to private area these Confederate statues. Before I came here today, I looked at Statesville Free News about the people that spoke last night, and there was like 130-some comments, and most of them was racist. Couple of them was even, I think, threatening about what they would do. So this is where we live at in Iredale County. I've never seen somebody lose a war and be able to put up statues. I lived in Germany for three years, and you couldn't find nothing of Hitler. I was glad to see NASCAR take down the flag. You can't honor two. Try to separate from the United States, and then you honor the other flag. You cannot honor two. Just like the good Lord tells you, you can't love two gods. Some of you are ex-military, weren't even a cop. I would think that you would understand how this are, having led troops, soldiers, or policemen. Do what's right for Iredale County. And whatever y'all do, if y'all decide not to remove it, we'll be back next month, and we'll be back the month after that, and we'll be back the month after that. And we will fight till they're all down. Lastly, I would say, no justice, no peace. No justice, no peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Thank you. Skip McCall?
Chairman Mallory, members of board, thank you for this opportunity this evening. Southern Poverty Law Center has helped identify more than 1,700 Confederate symbols still standing. After over 400 years of slavery, Jim Crow, discrimination, and a mere growing public anger over what many people, both black and white, say are monuments honoring the country's racist past as well as the present. Racism began in America in 1619, when black people were transported as slaves from Africa against their will to these shores. America was built on systemic racism from the very beginning, and it still continues this very day. The question I pose to those of you who have decision-making power over whether those monuments continue to exist, relocated to an appropriate place, or torn down. The question is, why do we want to memorialize or honor people who fought for continuing enslavement of other human beings? Some white people argue that the statues and monuments' purpose are about preserving Southern history and heritage. However, many historians say that argument doesn't hold up when you consider the timing. Early 1900s, when states were enacting Jim Crow laws to disenfranchise blacks. "Most of the people who were involved in erecting the monuments were not necessarily erecting a monument to the past," said Jane Daly, an associate professor of history at the University of Chicago, "but were rather erecting them toward a white supremacist future." It is not a coincidence that the majority of these monuments are placed directly in front of towns' courthouse. They make a very pointed statement about the rule of white, the rule of white supremacy. All who entered the courthouse are subject to the laws of white men. These Confederate statues are more than just an inanimate symbol. They are symbols with a defined purpose. White Europeans came to America with the intention of developing an all-white society. Many racist white people still hold on to this as the ultimate vision for America. The Civil War ended in 1865, in the Confederacy lost. Over the course of history, there have been many wars, but I have never seen a loser erect statues and monuments to commemorate the people and the causes they fought for. And furthermore, even though we as black people were defined by white masters as only three-fifths of a human being, we have sacrificed our blood, sweat, tears, and lives to make America what it is today. We have a profound opportunity before us as citizens of Statesville and Iredale County. It's an opportunity to move forward and demonstrate to members of the African-American community that we are being heard, we are being understood, and a change is certainly to come. Let us not allow over 400 years of suffering from slavery, Jim Crow, lynching, and systemic racism be in vain. Let us allow this, let us not allow this opportunity to pass. And I look forward to the day in time when we can all come together at the table of discussion, understanding, and common ground to develop a strategy and take actions to move forward from where we are. Thank you very much.
Alicia Standish?
Hi, I'm Lisa Standish, Alicia Standish. First, I'd like to start with saying thank you to the two gentlemen who became, came before me, and it touches me, and I hope it impresses the committee here, because we're none three-related in any way, shape, or form, but yet we all came here to discuss the same issue, the statue. I am actually with the new formed Group Committee Nonprofit, Times for Change. We're the ones that have been down at Mitchell protesting, if that's what you'd like to call it. And I am here and really just kind of winging it, because I wasn't prepared to actually speak on this matter, but I am passionate. The statue does need to be removed, because it does not represent all of Statesville. You know, it does not. And that's what this great country was built to one, is freedom of all of us, that we're all created equal in that great maker's image, no matter what we call that great maker. You know, we tend to call it generically God, but we're all created in that same, that's what America was built on, is that we're all the same and we're all equal. And when we have things, statues, that are representing the repression of any group, then that's not respecting that freedom. And that's very much in your face when it sits out here in center city. I've been very active on Facebook on some of this stuff, too, and one of the things that I have, I have stated or pointed out to people who want to say this is part of our history, and we can't erase history or we're failed to repeat it. No, that's not true. As the gentleman before me said, I don't see British statues, I don't see British flags being flown from cars or in front yards, because we defeated the British to become independent. But without the British colonies, we would not be a USA. We would not be here. But where the British statues, they're where they belong in history. That's where history belongs, in textbooks, in museums, in cemeteries, not center city. And my biggest reason for being here and being passionate is because I do fully believe we are all equal and created equal. And if this can happen to you or any one of you around here, it can happen to me. And that's the way I like to look at things. How would I feel? How would I feel if this were me? And I definitely believe in the golden rule, that if we live by that golden rule, do unto others as you would have others do unto you, I'm not going to go wrong. And I know every one of us sitting here in this room, if we, the shoe was on the other foot, we would feel the same way. And if we take the time to think about it that way, we're going to feel the same way. And I'm allowed now, I'm an advocate, I'm a healthcare provider. I spoke last night as well. I spoke last night on our housing situations and substandard housing. I get passionate about these things, because I love people. You know, I love my fellow human beings, and because I've known some of these same struggles. Not exact same struggles, because no, I'm not an African American, but I was a poor child, and I was a child of the system. And I know what it's like to live in, in poor conditions, or know what it's like to be embarrassed because of my surroundings. I know what it's like to struggle to bring myself up. Took me almost 40 years to get past some of those childhood struggles, because I had a good support network, and because, yes, by appearance, I am privileged. I am privileged, and that's not right. And technically, in my side, I'm not privileged, period. And nor do I believe myself to be a privileged Caucasian. I have Hispanic heritage, and today that's called brown. But irregardless, with my upbringing and my raising in the society of the 60s and 70s, we Spanish were considered Caucasian. Anyway, thank you, I've gone over my limit, but I am very, very grateful to the two gentlemen before me, because this speaks, the last thing I did want to say, but this speaks volumes to how much our community is with it. It speaks volumes, and I'm proud of our community. It speaks volumes, and I'm proud of our community, because there has been a very strong Caucasian outpouring of support for Times for Changes. And not just that, I did actually walk Saturday night, some of the time by myself, some of the time escorted by friends, down Broad Street, collecting signatures to have this removed. I even stopped at the well-known... withhold the name, but the well-known bar downtown that's known for a lot of trouble, a lot of issues, and gave us a lot of issues, and actually got 10 to 15 signatures at that site. That speaks volumes, when we have a facility that's known for their issues with this cause, yet a good 10 to 15 of them would listen to me and actually say, yes, please hand me that petition. I'm proud of Statesville. I'm proud of where Statesville is today, with how we are supporting our community. And I know I'm over, so I'm going to try to wrap it up real quick. But I am so proud of Statesville and what we have done in the last three to four weeks, and coming together as a community. I'm not originally from Statesville. I'm originally from Savannah, Georgia, but I've been in the Statesville area since 1998. I have never felt more a part of or more proud of Statesville than I have this past month. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Standish. Just to confirm for the record that you are at 150 Ashford Drive?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
That's in Olom.
Olom. Mr. Darrell Davidson.
Chairman Mallory and the other commissioners, Mr. Robinson, Commissioner Howe, two things. I did bring my mask, so I do have that. Also tell Superintendent Brady, I am a product of public school. I'm an attorney here. My name is Darrell Grant Davidson, Sr. I was born and raised here, right here in Statesville. And my mother used to bring me to Spain hours across the street. It was a warhorse across the street also, and I never really knew what this Confederate monument was. Well, as I got older, when I got in the 10th grade, actually, I went to Chapel Hill Senior High School, and I took a class called the Civil War. And that was one of the best classes that I've ever taken, actually, in my life, because it explained what the war was about, what the argument was about. It also explained what rights were, what people were fighting for, and all the heroes or non-heroes that came out of that war. After the 10th grade, I actually wanted to pursue more, and so I educated myself about it. Unlike a lot of the people that talk about heritage, that talk about, you know, what it means to them and the whole nine, I went on my own mission. I've been to Gettysburg. I've been to the museums. I've walked Pickett's Charge. I've visited plantations in South Carolina, North Carolina, Tennessee, Virginia. I've read memoirs. There were heroes in the Civil War, of course, like Harriet Tubman, Frederick Douglass, Robert Smalls, Google him. Robert Smalls was a slave that escaped, commandeered a ship, went to the Union's side. He eventually barred him and his family. I got freedom. Not only did he get freedom, but he actually, later on in life, became a politician, was elected to Congress right during Reconstruction. And so when people say, okay, it's about heritage, I don't see any monuments of Harriet Tubman, I don't see any monuments of Frederick Douglass, I don't see any monuments of Robert Smalls or Massachusetts 54th, who was, you know, portrayed in the movie Glory. What that time period, what I've understood and what it means to me was a time where the nation was divided. There were people who were fighting for rights or states' rights to preserve the idea that they were superior and that they could enslave people, and they wanted that to be the status quo and the way of life. That's what I learned, and that's what it made me feel like every time I would see these monuments at these different places. Unlike a lot of individuals, I travel to different courtrooms. There are many times, not only at the courthouse, but somewhere on the city square, like in Roan County, where they're debating this issue right tonight, that I have to actually look in that, and I actually get the feeling of a time when there were people who wanted to own me. There was a time where it's possible that Confederates could have actually won that war, and where would we actually be, or where would I actually be today? So when I see statues such as that, they have their proper place for them. Because if you're going to talk about the heritage and history of the war and of the Confederate Army and of the Confederate soldiers, then no puzzle is complete without all the pieces. Tell the truth. Tell the truth about everything that went in to these monuments, everything that went into the war, what the war was about, the people that it affected, and everybody that was actually involved. So I tell individuals, when they talk about, hey, tear it down, no, no, tear it down. What you should do is put it in its proper place, along with other places where history can be told and the truth can be told about it, period. I know I'm a little bit over my time, but my idea is that we need to start talking about this. We need to move forward with what we're going to do about this issue, simply because it's on our plate now. It's on our plate now, and we're going to have to face the music with it. Now, what it means to me may not mean to, you know, to someone, it may not mean the same thing to someone else. People had individuals that fought, you know, family ancestors that fought in the Confederate War and in the Civil War. And I'll tell you, that doesn't make them wrong for the way they feel, and it definitely doesn't make me wrong for the way that I feel about it, period. What it symbolized to me was a time of division, inequality, that is somehow was carried along the way to where we are actually today. So I leave the commissioners with this. Treating somebody equal and asking for equality costs you nothing. Treating somebody unequal can cost them their life. Something needs to be done about this issue with the statue, because it's just not going to go away. A lot of us have been silent about it, simply because we didn't feel like there was going to be a lot done about it, but now is the opportunity to put this on the table, dissect it, and see what we can do. We either need to place it in a place where it's appropriate, give it back to the individuals that own it, I'm not really sure. That's one of the things that I've talked with other individuals in other cities about, where they've given it back to the group that owned it, they've placed it in a memorial. But I don't think it should actually be a situation where we have to face it every day. As far as I'm concerned, as a minority, that's how it makes me feel. Thank you, actually, for your time. Darrell Davidson, Sr. My address is 171 Secretary Lane, Mooresville, North Carolina. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. That's everyone that had signed up to be heard. Is there anyone else I'll inquire that would like to be heard? Hearing or seeing none, I will close the public comment, period. I would just like to say that, you know, I greatly respect the people of Statesville and Idyl County, who in this time of civil strife in many other communities, have stood up and exercised their First Amendment rights in a lawful and a safe manner, safe in the sense that people mostly were wearing masks or were maintaining social distancing in a time when, as I said, this virus is not political, and it's not a respecter of anyone's status in life or color of their skin. So I just want to commend those that have been exercising that right, because it has raised an issue, a whole host of issues, that we need to, as was mentioned, come to the table of discussion to be able to talk about these issues that people just hadn't talked about, because people are uncomfortable talking about. I think if there's anything that I think myself, as a white man, you know, I never grew up with having to have the talk given to me, and I didn't have to give the talk to my three sons about, look, you know, you need to act certain ways in certain neighborhoods, or act certain ways if there's any law enforcement presence around you, you know. Just never had to do that. Well, you shouldn't have to do... No one should have to do that. So, you know, the comments were made about the pride folks have of how people in Statesville have reacted, and I would extend that, you know, throughout the county. I particularly want to express my appreciation to law enforcement and a group called PACT, the Police and Community Together. After the deaths in Ferguson, Missouri, and the unrest there, people in this community came together and broke bread and sat down and discussed issues, both from law enforcement perspective and from communities' perspective. And, you know, you end up with a community-based policing model. Police should be there to respond, to help citizens. And I think that that's gone a long way in this community, and I know Sheriff Campbell's here, he's been intentional about outreach. And that discussion has borne fruit. You know, we have a respectful dialogue and a respectful communication of our... of different perspectives, and that redounds to everyone's benefit. But we need, I think, to carry this forward, this opportunity to have a deep discussion about a whole host of issues. You know, one of the things that has, you know, focused attention tonight is the Confederate Memorial, the monument to soldiers that had died in service of the Confederacy from 1861 to 1865. Now, it pains me that people... You know, I hardly give it a second thought, as far as... It doesn't have any impact on me day to day, or... But understanding that it does have an impact on others, that it's a burr under the saddle. You know, none of us should be satisfied with people having that perception. We need to talk about it. That statue, you know, by state law, depending on the ownership of it, and that's, you know, unclear, I suppose, at this time, you know, cannot be moved unless there is approval from the North Carolina Historic Monuments Commission. I'm not sure what the process is there. But I think we're a little bit putting the horse before the cart. You know, I think what is going... You know, whether it went or whether it stayed, that has no real impact on the substantive issues that give rise to inequality, or the inability, or the inhibition of anyone to achieve their God-given potential. There are other things that stop that. There are man-made policies, there are traditions, there are, you know, cycles that have been generational. And we need to take a look, I think, at all of those things, in a holistic manner, rather. You know, poverty is at the root of most all of these, this inequality. But poverty can be defined too narrowly. It's not just, you know, income. It's not just money. Poverty, the dictionary will tell you, one of the definitions is, it is a lack of something. It's an inadequacy of something. So if you think of the things that we as human beings, since we are living in a fallen world, we all lack the qualities and the attributes that we really aspire to. But we need to understand those things that impact the lives and have continued to impact over many, many years, the lives of significant numbers of our population, both white and black, and Hispanic, and Asian and Indian, and Indian Indian. You know, we are a multicultural, multi-ethnic society today, and we need to look and see how all these communities are impacted in some way or another by what it is we do just by habit, or what we do based on just what the process has been for years. So look at that full range of the things that we lack. I don't know, sometimes a lack of education. You know, education and economic development are joined at the hip. A lack of opportunity, a lack of role models, a lack of, you know, healthy food options, lack of housing that is adequate, you know, a lack of a stable home life, or the lack of the ability to have your children looked after while you're at work. I mean, there's just a lot of things that we lack, and we need to see, okay, what can we as a community do to address those inadequacies, those deficits? And sometimes it's about just changing how we operate, and that doesn't cost anybody anything. Sometimes it costs money or resources that we don't necessarily have, not readily. So what do we do to be able to get those resources, or to start focusing those resources? And this needs to be a community-wide effort, you know, and, you know, so often there will be some incident that happens, and people come together and they talk about change, but nothing really changes after the moment. They may take symbolic actions, but that's putting the cart before the horse. I think we need to look at the substantive actions we can take, and after we've started to address those, and after people of goodwill can work together, then we can look at the symbolic actions that we can take that can be consistent with what we've arrived at. I know a lot of very strong... people that I very much respect, you know, Mr. Scott, Mr. McCall, Mr. Davidson, I know personally, but... And clearly, I understand where you're coming from. I've heard it. You said it in no uncertain terms. What you haven't heard from is a number of people that have different views. But, you know, we need to get in and share those views and understand eyeball to eyeball, not on Facebook, not on social media, not in some anonymous fashion, but, you know, person to person, what the issues are, so that people can understand the other person's perspective. And then at the end of that process, and at the end of looking at some substantive things that can be done, then, you know, at that time, whatever symbolic actions can be taken to represent that progress can have meaning, and can have buy-in, and have community-wide support. Now, granted, there's going to be some folks that aren't going to be satisfied with anything other than what they want. Understand that. The nature of democracy is not one that caters to an extremist position or an absolutist position. It's all, you know, this country was built on compromise. It continues to be built on compromise of people with goodwill but differing perspectives. So what I would like to follow up with your support is to start this discussion and delve into these different issues that run across the gamut of our daily lives. And we have a task force system that was referred to earlier by Brady Johnson, where we look at economic development, we look at education, we look at public health and well-being, we look at public safety and justice, and we look at general governmental services and functions. And I'd like to make available to all the stakeholders that process to be able to see... sit down and drill down into the issues as they pertain in those substantive areas across the board with all the other stakeholders, you know. We have three large municipalities south of Forty with, you know, Statesville and Troutman and Mooresville, we have Harmony. So those town boards and those mayors, business leaders, nonprofit organizations, faith communities, everybody really needs to be around the table so that we can bring to bear all the resources of our community. And if we do that, we'll all be the beneficiary of it. You know, if we can stand out as a community that's been able to break this Gordian knot of talking about the past, but not letting the past, letting the past inform us, but not control us, that we can look to the future and build together a prosperous and equitable and fair community that can be an example, can be that shining city on the hill, as it's talked about in the Bible. So we'll never get there, you know, it won't happen till the second coming, but we can make a stab at it, we can make progress towards it. We're all human beings. And so with some grace and goodwill and giving an extra measure of credit to people that have made different views, then I hope and I believe that we can get there. So that being said, stay tuned while we want, we want to move forward. So I'll be in touch with the folks that have signed up here, and I'll be, you know, if I, I don't know that I have everybody's telephone number. Pardon?
(inaudible).
Yeah.
Again, I'll restate my name. I'm Alicia Standish. I'm from 150, 150 Ashford Drive, Olin, North Carolina. With all due respect and definitely appreciate everything, Commissioner, that you, Chairman, that you have said, you've said a lot of good things. I am appreciative of that. But I can't help but also feel like it was just a lot of talk. What you said is actually valid. We do need to come together eye to eye and sit down on a lot of these issues, but that does not negate the statue. And there's no reason that we cannot be both talking about and looking into what it would take to remove the statue while coming together on some of these other issues. And I do feel passionate about this. I do, and I'm going to continue, and I heard other people say, "We're going to keep coming back." And when I spoke, I said there was three of us that were, didn't know each other and didn't know the other was going to be here. There was actually four of us that didn't know that the other was going to be here. You know, this is serious. In anything that's in the face of anybody else, that's serious. And no, I don't feel like, I really feel like most of what you said was lip service. I really do. It was a way to hush us down because, see, we did address it. No, we haven't addressed it, not until you address some of those issues you talked about of finding out what will it take. Because all across this country, these statues are being torn down, and they are being mutilated, et cetera, et cetera, and that's not what we want. We have been peaceful here in Statesville, and we want it to stay that way. And I would hate to see some of these outside people possibly coming in here instead of us and taking a sledgehammer to it. That's what we're asking for. Yes, let's respect history, but have history respect us as well. It has a place. And yes, I've heard this before, that there is a process to have a statue removed. We get that part, now let's start that process. And concurrently start those committees you were talking about. I'll be happy to sign up to be on half those committees you're talking about, especially in, in urban development, in housing needs, healthcare needs. I'll be happy to. But no, sir. And then thank you for letting me speak again, and I'm sorry I got more passionate and more, because I sure don't mean to be disrespectful. I really don't. But what we're asking for is a peaceful way to do this, not what we've already seen in a lot of cities, that it's taken out of your hands, it's taken out of our hands. Because what we have here tonight, and what we've had for the last month in Statesville, is peaceful, and that's the way we want to continue it. And that's the way we get things done, is through being peaceful. Thank you.
Next item. You? Next item. Agenda, put the agenda.
I'm not sure I understand what you're talking about. Next item is unfinished business, right?
We are.
Excuse me, new business.
New business, that's correct. All right. Thank you again. The next item is new business, and I believe we have a change in meeting dates.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we amend our meeting schedule to cancel the July 7th meeting and have one meeting in July, which is the 21st.
Okay, motion to cancel the July 7th meeting, which is traditionally done during the first meeting in July, around the 4th of July, and to reconvene again on 21 July, which is our regularly scheduled meeting date. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
There's a like sign. Motion carries unanimously. County managers report.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. Just one quick report, and Ms. Henson talked about this a little bit before. We have community COVID-19 testing scheduled for each Tuesday and Thursday through July the 9th. Tuesdays are in a Statesville location, Thursdays are in, at Mooresville High School, and they're from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. The Statesville locations are the Boys and Girls Club on Cochrane Street, Western Avenue Baptist Church, Mitchell Community College, and Western Avenue Baptist Church in that order. You can see the flyer on our website if you'll go to the Iredelle County website. The flyer with the information is all available on that website. We are, we have a new group, StarMed, that's doing this mass testing for us. They are doing a virtual visit before the testing for two reasons. One, they're trying to collect some more information regarding, and Ms. Henson talked to you a little bit about this before in the update, but regarding, are you exhibiting symptoms? Have you been around someone? Are you a close contact of someone that's tested positive? Things of that nature. Are you an essential worker? And they're trying to identify that because what we saw in our mass testing events that we held previously with the number of positives, the majority of those were individuals that were asymptomatic. So we're trying to track that and get some more information. So they are asking for virtual visits before, so they can get more data relative to Iredelle County positive cases, and also to make sure that they have appropriate supplies on hand when you show up. So please visit our website to get more information on those mass testing events, and that's all.
There is a wealth of information on the website concerning COVID-19 in terms of tracking the progress of the virus in Iredelle County and indeed throughout the state. So I'd encourage you to go to the website and check that out. We have had a closed session for two items already, one on economic development pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 subsection A4. And is there a, any kind of a motion due out on that?
Yes, there is, for economic development.
Correct. A motion to call for a public hearing on July 21st, 2020 at 7:00 p.m. regarding an economic incentive of up to $228,000 for a five-year period for Project Transformer, based on a maximum investment of $14 million in Iredelle County.
Motion by Commissioner Robertson. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item we discussed was a personnel matter pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 subsection A6. That matter is not, nothing to report out publicly on that. The final issue that we have for a closed session is pursuant to attorney-client discussion under North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 subsection A3. And at this time, we will adjourn into closed session and return at the conclusion of that to close out tonight's meeting. at the conclusion of that to close out tonight's meeting.
And there's nothing further to report out from our closed session. Is there any further comments or business to come before us this evening? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So Marvin. Mr. Bowles made a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned by Vice Chairman Bowles.
Public session, and there's nothing further to report out from our closed session. Is there any further comments or business to come before us this evening? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So Marvin, Mr. Bowles made a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned by Vice Chairman Bowles. All in favor, please say aye. It's my assignment, we are adjourned.